...Board of Selectmen's meeting. We came into session at 6:30 PM tonight. We entered into executive session. We came back out about seven minutes or so, or seven, and now we're going back into, uh, we're gonna open under regular session. Could I have a roll call again, please?
Um, Selectman Slavin, Manise, Bruce, Titlebaum, Chairman Trappiano, um, Town Administrator Sullivan, and Town Council Bowen are all present.
Could I have the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Johnson?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right.
Uh, we have, again, the Foo Truck Event, October 5th, 11 to 3 PM downtown, and I think that's all I have right now on that piece.
All right. Next up, Jim.
I'm also.
All right. Peter?
Yeah, I just got a text alert on my phone. They're doing aerial spraying in Wareham, uh, tonight for Triple E to try to knock the mosquito population down, so, uh, if you see a plane flying low, it's not gonna crash, it's not gonna, you know, do anything bad, it's out there spraying. And continue, please, to use DEET. Don't just trust the plane to take care of the problem. Spray yourself whenever you go out. Uh, with the recent rain last night, the mosquito population is gonna blow right up again. Uh, there's no cold nights to knock 'em back down like we need in order to stop this plague, so just be respectful of it. We've got people just about every week getting it, uh, and we've had, what, two or three people die so far, so, you know, pay attention to it. Um, the other thing is, uh, today, the state actually, Cannabis Control Commission announced new regulations for delivery of marijuana products and for social clubs, uh, so that's something that the state has, uh, has okayed. We did manage to get the, uh, moratorium on the warrant, and the planning board already held a public hearing on it, so the moratorium, if it's passed by town meeting, actually relates back to the date of the planning board hearing, which was in August, so we would be covered for that. It would give us time to figure out, you know, what to do with social marijuana clubs, uh, where to zone them, whether we want them, that sort of thing, so at least we've taken sort of the prophylactic step there.
Mary?
I have...
Just a comment before...
Nothing. All right, uh, yeah, dust to dawn, by the way, is sort of the rule of thumb. Good, Mary, um, sorry, uh...
On the marijuana, when we get to Board comments, I'll update everybody. I was on the phone with the Cannabis Control Commission today.
Okay. All right, next up, citizens' participation. Is anybody here tonight to talk to us? Okay, next up, Board comments. Uh, we'll start with you, Alan.
Okay, just an update. The governor was announcing the ban on all vaping products effective today.
On which?
Vaping products, you know...
Vaping products?
At the same time, I think he was quite surprised that the Cannabis Control Commission came out out of the blue with some rulings, which he wasn't expecting. Uh, the first piece is the home delivery. Um, I was on the phone with the legislative analyst for the Cannabis Control Commission twice today. They called me first, and I had to follow up with them. Uh, the home delivery, the final details will be done in the next couple of days, as far as the vehicles, markings, safe in the vehicles, GPS controls, all these things are all coming through. Uh, the question I had from day one was, uh, in Wareham, if we have one of our retail facilities or medical facilities, where can they deliver? Um, and I was always curious whether they could deliver outside the town that's been approved. Uh, what I found today was kind of good for us maybe, but kind of disturbing. The way the ruling is, if a town voted no for marijuana, that's fine, but that doesn't stop delivery. If a, if a town voted, you know, in a town meeting and changed their zoning to ban marijuana, then the marijuana cannot be delivered into the town. So there are towns out there that have no idea that we could actually deliver into their town, because there are a bunch of towns that actually never took the official step of banning marijuana in their town. Voting no is not, basically does not trigger it. I was completely surprised when I was told that today.
I was completely surprised.
So that was number one. Number two, the social clubs, um, they basically have more or less gone through with it, but the problem is the social clubs have to go through the House and Senate. There's a bunch of laws that have to be modified and changed, and they're hoping that it'll be done this session. This session is until December, when they take a rest, and then again in the spring. The chances of this happening is up in the air. There's, there's no answer either way. I also spoke about the moratorium we have, and the answer was that most likely the Attorney General will have sympathy on any town that puts a moratorium in, you know, for that, even though there's no rules in place. So what we're, what we're voting for, you know, may or may not help either way, but the bottom line is they won't throw it out. So that's the answer from the Cannabis Control Commission, from one of their official offices as of today.
All right, thank you, Alan. Um, anybody else, Board comments? Jim?
Yeah, um, I had brought up, uh, some stuff about town policy. I'd, just hold on one second. I had brought up wanting to discuss town policy. I thought it was gonna be on, on this week's agenda. We can discuss this stuff last week. This is just showing you the redundancy, um, where we have four policies on access to town council going back, you know, from eighty-eight, oh-two forward. So I think it's time we take and put some of those in a GUI underneath the, uh, policies, you know, a drop-down menu saying old policies, and start to reduce what's there to look at, so when people go to look at town policies, it's cleaner and easier to, uh, access. So this is the first one that I looked at, 'cause, you know, just where it was alphabetically up top. And, uh, you know, this has access to town council, so we can discuss this next week if you want to put it on the agenda. Maybe, um, start moving to reduce the clutter that you're faced with, and, and, like I said, if you want to have it on the page, put it in a button underneath, "Old Town Policies." Someone wants to look at it, click, they got it.
It's all on the website.
I think.
That's all on one, two, three, four, on the website, on the town policy. All covering the same thing, which has been replaced...
Changed all these.
...by a succeeding policy, which was replaced by a succeeding policy, which was replaced by another policy, all on the same thing, but they're all listed. So it's just...
You're saying that there's basically superseded policies still, still showing as active?
Yeah.
On the website?
Well, just, it shows there.
Okay.
So people out in the public, they don't know...
I will have to figure this out.
Yeah.
So we just should clean it up.
So we need a policy for the policies.
Not just with this one, go through all the poli... Huh? Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
So we should go through and clean them up, so it's just clean for people to look at, and we'll do one and two at a time.
Good catch, Jim.
This one goes back to...
Good catch. No wonder I can't find anything, there's too many to search through.
I guess I'm the only one that reads them.
All right. (laughing)
I'm done, thanks.
Next up, Peter.
I'm good.
Mary? All right, next up would be the appointment, reappointments of, and interviews. We have the Library of Board of Trustees.
Appointments, yes, we have Nancy Rice. Sorry, sorry, I know. Nancy Rice, sorry.
Come on down.
You can welcome her.
Right to the microphone, please.
Yep, welcome to the Star Chamber.
You're, you're a star tonight, you're on the star seat.
(inaudible) trial for my life.
Yeah, no, no, this is really easy. Sit down.
Seat.
Tell us who you are, why you want to serve, all that, you know?
Okay. I am Nancy Kushman Rice. I grew up in Wareham, and when I was retiring from teaching and moving back to Wareham, I spent a lot of time doing volunteer work with various organizations. Um, this past year, I've spent my time at the library. I'm an active member of the Friends of the Library. I've attended four meetings of the library trustees, and I'm happy to see, since the library's recertified, how things have grown, how it's been so positive in the town, and I'd like to be a part of that. I'd like to be an active part of that and contribute any way I can to help the library's growth and future success.
Good answer.
Yep.
(laughing) That's a terrific answer.
Thank you.
I'm telling you, that is really a terrific answer. All right, it's, for me, it is, anyway. Anybody have any questions?
No, Nancy served on the Historical Society with me on the Board of Directors. Uh, she maintained a website and was very active in a lot of places, so I'm sure she'll be a great asset to the library.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Go ahead, Alan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Alan, seconded by Mary. Any other discussion?
Just confirm...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Confirm the timeframe, though.
Yeah, the date.
Oh, uh, for a term, uh, to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Twenty twenty-two, you're good, too.
Yep.
Now, you gotta go get sworn in at the clerk's office, um, your paperwork, you pick up in our office, uh, tomorrow. Give them a little time, though, okay? Before you go in, you know what I mean? So they can get it ready, and then they'll have it for you, okay?
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. Next up, licenses and permits, quarter pass. We need a few more minutes, another couple of minutes, so let's do, um...
Got the donation from the library?
Accept the donation from the Wareham Free Library. Let's do that.
Okay. We have a donation here, um, from Patricia Whalen, Friends of the Wareham Free Library, um, a donation the amount of $1,950. So I move that we approve the donation of $1,950 to the Wareham Free Library for the purpose of books and materials and other needs.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by...
Second.
Peter. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Request for signs?
Yeah, you, we could do that, too. Do that quickly. Request a sign from the Cranberry Educational Foundation.
Yep, um, they have everything here that we require, so I move that we approve the placement of signs for the Cranberry Educational Foundation.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by...
Second.
Peter. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna go to the hearing now.
You got fifteen more seconds.
Yeah, fifteen seconds? Well, I guess...
Let me see what my phone says.
We can, it's, is it, is it right?
Seven fourteen, yep.
All right, we'll wait fifteen seconds, ten seconds, whatever it is. Five, four, three.
Boom.
All right, all right, uh, I'm gonna, we're having a hearing tonight at 7:15 for an inflammable fluids license application submitted by Cranberry Realty Trust, 3220 Cranberry Highway, Buzzers Bay, Massachusetts. Uh, there, oh, there you are.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, I'm...
All right, could I have somebody open the hearing, please?
Motion...
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. All right, the hearing's open. All right, so why don't you tell us what you're gonna do? There's already a license in place there, is there, is there not?
There's currently a license for thirty-eight thousand gallons of gas.
Okay.
Um, ten thousand gallons being diesel, because the current property had a lot of trucks going in there and getting gas. Now it's gonna be converted to a convenience store gas station, where they're gonna have more passenger cars coming in, so the license is almost forty years old, um, so they just want to upgrade, you know, add two thousand gallons of gas and then reduce the diesel. You know, and some of the, some of the text of what they call gas is not the same anymore, so, um, we're gonna put in two...
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Two twenty thousand gallon split tanks.
So you're actually gonna reduce the amount of gas you're holding, fuel you're holding?
We're gonna reduce the amount of diesel, but increase the gas.
Well, two thousand and you, how much diesel are you gonna decrease?
Two.
Two thousand, so it's basically the same, it's a watch.
Right, but we're, we're going from thirty-eight to forty thousand. Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
Pretty straightforward.
All right. Um, any, any questions, please?
Uh, I apologize. Where's the, where's the actual location?
Twenty-four sixteen Cranberry Highway.
Which is where?
Corner of...
It's right across from what's gonna be the New Wendy's there.
Uh, do we have the site plan to look at? There was, there was issues about the access, uh, from twenty-eight and Toby Road there.
Well...
That wouldn't have any, that would go, that would have something to do with Planning Board or Zoning Board. I mean, the site plan is in the package that you received?
Yeah, but we, we, can I see the site plan?
Oh.
Hold up, please.
There should have been a copy.
I, I understand, that's the problem, but I didn't get a site...
This, has this been in front of the Planning Board already for site plan review?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I got, yep.
So there's tow road right there, so that's, entrance is roughly in the same place as the one that's there now.
Yeah, the original application...
The building's been long, elongated, but it's basically in the same, it looks like they didn't change the curb cuts at all.
They were supposed to move it down a little bit. There's supposed to be some changes and stuff down there.
Put an extra lane in there.
Well, but you know what? All we have to...
The problem I have is not this, this itself, the problem is that any business that is gonna increase traffic on this road, we're supposed to have traffic mitigation as we move forward, for any, any new business already changed, it's gonna increase traffic. And we're under the gun on this because the road is becoming a problem with traffic.
Well, I, I... That's up to the Planning Board to approve, though.
That's up to the Planning Board, though.
This is just fuel storage.
So we could condition the license, uh, the, the change on...
Planning Board approval.
Planning Board approval.
They already have it.
It's already been approved, right?
So it's already been approved, so if it's already been approved, then, then we're sort of out of it, anyway.
I just wanted to see if we have them, because there was a discussion for the State Highway about...
I hear you, um...
Sorry, my phone, my Zoom, Bob. The problem that we had was it was a State Highway, and there was questions whether the cut was approved or not, et cetera, and I didn't see anything come through. That's all.
Well, if the Planning Board approved it, they had to have site, they would have had to have State Highway approval.
It's been approved.
Cause, cause it's twenty-eight.
He has to get a permit anyway.
Yeah, it'd have to go through Mass Highway.
I know.
And they didn't cha, it doesn't look like they, I mean, it just, you know, just knowing...
I think it's a lot harder than that.
Yeah, yeah, well, and it moved to the right, you know, a lot, because this is where the old, right here is where the diesel pump is, right now, where they, they go around here and they drive in, they come out this way. But this is roughly in the same place as the entrance now, and I want to say, if you move this building over to where the old building was, I'd say that's pretty much in the same place, too.
Yeah, they're supposed to...
I don't think they changed the curb cuts. Maybe Mass Highway wouldn't let them, I don't know, but whatever.
That, that's over there.
And that's over, that's their problem, not ours.
(inaudible).
All right.
Yep.
All right, so any other questions?
Did you print the application? Did you write the application? Barrett is printing. (laughing) Hey, what?
Could you sit down at the mic and talk, though, so that everybody can hear you at home, because otherwise they're gonna say, "We can't hear."
(inaudible).
There you go, thank you.
He asked if I printed the application, I said yes.
Yeah, and he, and he said you did a nice job.
Thank you.
Awesome.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
No.
All right, could I have a motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Motion by Jim to close the hearing, seconded by...
Second.
Alan, I saw him raise his hand first.
All right.
Roll call, Alan.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. All right, what's your pleasure here, ladies and gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Just so everybody knows, we have all but one card came back, uh, although the certificate for the, the sendout is here. The, the thing is here.
Yep.
So all, but all the green cards came back.
Green bill didn't come back, right?
Okay?
Good.
All right?
Yeah.
So motion to approve by Peter?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go forth and sell gas.
Good luck. Wow. Sounds biblical.
No, it's just a regular vote. Discussion and vote whether to recommend town meeting articles. Peter, do you still have your list?
Uh, that should be...
(inaudible).
I think...
Yeah, I'll tell you what we got left.
Yeah, and...
See what we can pick off.
And see what we, see what we can...
Uh, capital plan, do we have anything ready for that?
No.
Um, free cash?
Supposed to be.
No.
(laughing) Did you see the look on his face? What, are you kidding?
That was kind of a rhetorical question, because he always crows when the free cash is certified, so I'm like...
The district got theirs already.
Yeah, what's up with that? The district beat you to the punch? What, they have less money to count, is that it?
So where are we at now?
Okay.
(inaudible).
I know. All right, uh, next up, unpaid bills, I guess we probably...
You got any unpaid bills, or you still gonna be holding that out?
Union contracts, I know we don't have anything there.
Nope.
Um, and going down the list, Water Pollution Control Funding Request for Process Improvements, that one...
We're gonna hold off on that for now.
Could I just ask a procedural question about that one?
You may.
Who are we gonna have come before us and talk to us about this?
Well, I want to see the engineer, whoever's promoting this, come forward, come in front of us.
I think we need, I think we need the tech...
That's a pretty serious issue.
Ten million bucks, I want to hear from the technical...
Yeah, I want to hear a technical person that's gonna tell me, because I'm tired of it, two thousand and eight, we've been chasing this. I want somebody to come in and say, "Yep, if you do this, this is gonna take care of this, and these people are gonna be happy."
Yeah.
I want to hear somebody say that. For ten million bucks?
Yeah.
I mean, other than that, we might as well just buy their houses.
Yeah, exactly, thirty houses out there, three hundred grand a pop, they'd probably be happy.
I don't think you're gonna get that answer from anybody.
So, that's it.
All right.
Oh, pass suspect.
All right, so we're back on the same deal. All right, good, this is you, Peter, sign this.
Oh.
All right, all right, so that's it for town meeting. Wow, this is gonna be fast tonight. Any other business, not...
We have the master plan, but...
Oh, sorry, the master plan, all right.
I didn't really get a chance to look at that.
Sorry, I, I, you know, I was on both sides of it, I did speak too soon. All right, so I asked everybody to look over the master plan and give me some opinion about what you thought, if there was something you thought should be added, something you thought should be changed, or are you happy with it? And we'll start with you, Alan, because I always start with you.
Um, well, I have, we can't do it here, 'cause I have comments on every page.
Comments on every page, okay. Well, that's good, so then we'll pull those together and get them to them.
Yeah, I can just give them, Ken can take a look at it. This was done by SERP, basically, Grant King, did a very good job. The only problem, which I've mentioned before, is, uh, we never really set up a master plan committee...
Right.
That we normally do, just to go and have stakeholders and different pieces look at it, you know, and really go through it. And a lot, what's happened here, because this was done in 2018, and really didn't move at all, there's a lot of things in here, if you read it, it says this should be implemented 2019 town meeting, et cetera, so a lot of stuff has to be updated and corrected as well.
Well, okay, uh, Jim?
We get the office to send out what...
Well, if you could get that to the office, we'll try to get it, uh, you know, all those put together.
Yeah, I just hate to kill trees with all this...
Can you write it on a sheet or a list about what you thought, please?
I can try.
The office can scan what he wrote.
Oh, they can just scan what you wrote?
Yeah, the problem is...
All right, so get it to the office, then.
You get eighty-four pages, yeah.
That's fine, yep. Jim, what did you, what did you discover?
Well, um, some of the things that are discussed in it have already been implemented, so it kind of should be reorganized to say already implemented. Um, a lot of little things, um, I, I think the road commissioners aren't, aren't mentioned at all, having to do with, um, you know, parking and, and, uh, and road layouts and, and other things, and I think that's kind of in their purview, you know, when they're saying who's responsible. It, it should fall in their purview, and they're not mentioned. Um, very little, um, attention giving to, uh, senior center, new senior center, the process of move forward to getting it done, uh, senior housing, um, a little bit about affordable housing, but it should be more inclusive to also, uh, bring in responsible parties, such as the Wareham Housing Authority and, um, the Affordable Housing Trust, in order to address these issues. So, so as an Alan, I mean, I marked the heck out of it, but, I mean, some of it is minor. Um, I transferred it to, some of it to a notebook, I'll get it back and try to type it up and forward it.
Forward, good. Forward, good.
I mean, maybe the train's left the station, maybe not. That's about it.
Um, I liked how it's pretty much a layout where they do the A, B, C, you know, different options that you can do. And I hope that this document can really be utilized a lot because one of the issues that they bring up in here is our, our two sides to every issue here, where we really want more affordable housing, but we don't want here, and we don't want forty B, and they give you different ways that you can do it, the, you know, sprawling neighborhoods versus condensed neighborhoods and how it costs more for a town to utilize a sprawling neighborhood and stuff like that. Are we going to do anything further with this? Are we going to do a workshop and try to tighten it up a little bit?
Now that we get our stuff, I think we, we're going to get it forwarded to Ken for one, and then he's going to have to put some of our stuff together and then see what they think. Because I think we have a valid input into this, seeming that we are the policymakers. And without the policies, this goes no place.
Yeah, we're still waiting on the slum and blight study to come through and stuff, which is going to help a lot.
And I thought there was some great stuff in there.
Yeah.
That was really good. And I thought that difference, the way doing housing and stuff, I thought that was a really good part about it. But I thought there was some stuff in there that shouldn't be in there at all. That I don't even know why it's in there. So, and I marked it up. Unfortunately, I left it in my car. It's on my front seat, but I got mine in too.
We'll come back to it in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and then, so I think without, like I said, our input is very important in this, and us buying into this process is very important because that's what we're here for. We're here to implement this stuff, and our policies are what's got to make it work. Without, without the selectmen going forward, and I know, you know, it's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. I'm telling you, it's going to gather dust, just like all the rest of them did. Now, I'm not saying that everything in there is something that we're going to do because that would be outrageous probably, to even think that. But it is a good model to take a peek at while you're doing the stuff. It's a guideline, it's a good guideline. And I thought some of it, like I said, was very good. I wish I had my notes. But it was really good, and then I thought other stuff should be eliminated. So, I'm going to bring that up in my, my list.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, one of the things I'd like to point out is it wasn't just Serp at deciding this on their own. They had public polls, public meetings, public hearings. And this is the gathered data and input that we got back from the public. And that, that's what we received, and that's what they based it off of. And so, they didn't create this in the void. And I know, Alan, you said stakeholders. Well, the stakeholders, the public, were part of this. And instead of having this sort of uber amount of board or committee that was cumbersome, it actually flowed and got, got things done and sampled more people than just a small amount. So, I think that, that was very good of it, so.
I, I think you had twenty at each of the public hearings and forty people responded to the survey.
And, you know, but that's, I mean.
There's something, at least you had it.
Right, they reached out, it wasn't done in a vacuum, it was, you know.
A lot of times, these things are like that, you get no.
I know that.
You have a public hearing, you can have ten of them, and nobody shows up. You get zero people showing up to them, you know. Good, Peter, you were next.
Yeah, I mean, initially, initially when they were, when Serp had came in, you know, they did their presentations. But one of the things they had done, you know, speaking to the opportunity for public input, was to take the goals of the prior master plan and put them on, you know, long scrolls of paper and saying, well, this was a goal from the past, the prior master plan. How do you think, you know, the town has met this goal? And you had an opportunity to take a, you know, marker and, and write down your critique, one way or the other, what you thought of it. So, I mean, there was that outreach in this. This wasn't just a top-down, you know, document from a couple of out-of-town people. So, you know, that is there to be considered. I agree that now that it's over a year old, it's, it's time to sort of reopen the process, see if we can get more engagement.
It's not a bad idea.
In the industrial park, they said, I mean, the way it was, it was strongly worded, like the town should use everything in their power to try to develop that area because it's so important.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, one of the problems that always bothers me over there is the way the Bliss property is being used up. It's not being used up properly, in my opinion.
It's almost getting landlocked.
Yeah, it is.
So, you hate to use the word, but maybe to expand the road, Patterson Brook Road, by taking property in eminent domain so you can access it and not have a half a mile road coming in off of twenty-eight. Because it's kind of a pork chop, you know, so you could get one, two down the base end and one at the top end off of. I discussed it with Derek.
Well, one of the things.
Sometimes you have to make a hard decision in order to move forward. Otherwise, it's pretty much landlocked, except unless you want to put a half-mile road in, quarter-mile road.
One of the things they did was, and the Bliss property, which bothers me is they, 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 they keep crunching it in with all these little projects, so to speak. And it was a very valuable piece of property, in my opinion. In fact, it was one of our centipedes once upon a time that was really going to help the town, you know, sort of grow and, and not only grow, but come up with some funds, you know, money, which is always good with your commercial side. But what the, what happened was is that they're talking about as well as putting a train depot out there. When the train depot came, that was one of the discussions, which in my opinion is another thing that would be a boondoggle. Because for one, it would take another piece of the property away, and there's no tax money there. It's just like that stupid, you know, I'm sorry, but they, we had a selectman one time talk us into putting a mail facility out there, which we get zero for, you know, out there, which I think is ridiculous. I mean, you know, let the mail people go someplace else. I mean, you know, not in the middle of the heart of our, our commercial developed property.
Lot of jobs though.
Huh?
Lot of jobs there.
Actually, it's empty, there's hardly no one there now.
I see a lot of trucks coming. You talking down on Toby Road?
Yeah, it's on Toby Road. I, I go by there all the time, there's like three cars there.
Yeah, that's the property I'm talking out behind there. They need to have access in order to really utilize that property.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, that's part of the things that have come along. And I remember when we had the other, the other thing, we took it out when I was a selectman back in two thousand. We took the thing out, dusted it off, and we picked out some things, and we started to pick away at some of the things that we thought were viable and that we wanted to use. But I don't think too many groups along the way ever used that thing. I, I don't think it saw the light of day. And I think we got to have a real, I mean, let's find something, or, like you said, maybe we need to go and just get a little more into this thing and, and see what happens.
Development authority, that's kind of.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
It's heavy all through this, I know.
You know, because what you're going to be doing is going to lead into this.
Bless you.
Bless you.
All right, all right, I guess that's enough. So, everybody get your pieces together and we'll.
Get our hand raised over here.
We'll see what we can do. Go ahead, Alan, you had something you want to say?
Uh, I think we get too, I won't say nervous, but we try and protect everybody, whatever. My complaint is not that, you know, someone didn't do a good job, it didn't get enough people.
No, I thought they did a good job.
I have no question about that. The problem I have is that we just don't have enough of our boards and everybody else involved in it coming back with a lot of the pieces, you know, and that includes us. And we're probably more guilty than anybody because Jim and I will be working on our, which we just talked about, our policy statement, which really is a microcosm of a master plan. And it was kind of funny, Jim mentioned the road commissioners. And in my notes that we have from way back, institute effective parking and traffic control rules, regulations, and bylaws. I have a little note beside road commissioners.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it's just a whole bunch, and actually, in this whole thing, which is about twelve pages, there's maybe two sentences that are validating more out of this whole thing.
You know, a lot of this stuff used to be easier when we were the road commissioners. Then we could take the bull by the horns and get stuff done.
We've actually done almost everything that's in this policy. It's actually been done through the town administrator, you know, the way you've done different things, et cetera. All I'm getting at is that if we're going to do this and implement it, we got to make it so it works and we're all on board with it. And in my opinion, in order for this to work, the board of selectmen have to lead this, make sure it happens. The planning board brings this forward, so we're not taking anything away from them. But if we are a hundred percent behind it, make sure we're comfortable with it. It's going to happen what happened every other time, it goes in a corner and it stays there.
I want to tell you, you know why we have road commissioners?
Yeah.
Because the selectmen were too afraid to make the real choices that it took to implement parking controls and things that they needed to implement in onset and everywhere else because they thought it was too political.
Yes.
So, they got rid of the road commissioners, and that's why they signed on to that whole thing.
They, they used to be elected, correct? And now they're appointed.
Well, we were, that's way back, but we were the road commissioners. And they got rid of it. I know why they got rid of it. Nobody wanted to, nobody wanted to stand up there and make the hard decisions. But that's what, that's what we get paid for, all that zero money.
All I'm saying is that, you know, basically, if we're going to do this, we as a group need to actually go through this and, and put some effort into it, not just say, fine, it's fine, doesn't work.
It's a good guidebook, it's not, it's not the gospel.
Well, it's not the.
Everything in there.
Yeah, of course not. It's not everything to everybody either, you know.
But it, it, it's your basic guide for your next five or ten years of where you want to go. So, everybody understands where the end goal is. You may not go the same way, but you have a goal you want to get to. It's a really good tool.
Secession.
All right, everybody done?
I'm done.
Any other town business not reasonably anticipated last forty-eight hours? Nobody? Okay, town administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As selectmen say, and spoke about, the governor has declared a public health emergency and all vaping products are temporarily banned for at least the next four months. Spoke to Mr. Ethier about it. And, all vaping.
All of it?
Not bacon.
Some of them go hand in hand, Jim.
What are you going to do?
Vaping products, so, uh, you know, Mr. Ethier's guy and his staff are going to be going a little crazy, going to the stores and such, and they're going to be hearing it. So, if, it clearly isn't something we've done locally, it's, it's coming from the top down.
Just to that point, I don't see this surviving three days. These companies losing hundreds of millions of dollars, and they're going to be running into court so fast, their coats are going to be on fire.
They're doing this all over the country, Peter, right now.
Federal government's starting to impose.
The federal government's talking about doing it.
Yeah, talking about it, but.
You know, although they're so busy with everything else, you know, they won't have time to do anything.
You've had some deaths, et cetera, so this one here is not going to be that easy to blow out.
The Mayflower Municipal Health Group, which we are part of, voted to hold steady the, the retiree rates for medics too with the PDP, so they'll be staying at three hundred and seventy-eight dollars total. We have, we have a hundred and sixty-six current subscribers, so that's almost a fifty thousand dollar bill monthly to the town. So, it's good that they, they held the rates, they've been, they've been good and steady, and it's good for our retirees as well. So, VeriLife, they've been cleaning up Bessie Park and doing a nice job of it. They approached me about formally adopting the park. I asked them to adopt Merchant's Way, that's one of our biggest areas for litter and such. And they jumped right on that. So, you know, VeriLife has formally adopted Merchant's Way, that you'll see them out there, they'll be cleaning up. And, you know, we look forward to their help, they've done a great job with Bessie Park. And they said they're going to still keep on working on Bessie Park and cleaning it up. So, I really appreciate all their help on it. And that, bless you. And.
Thank you.
That is all the news, that's fit to print.
That's it, okay. All right, next up, liaison reports, please. Peter? Nope. Jim?
Hello.
Um, yeah, I, I attended the.
No, someone left their phone behind. It's sitting here in the selectman's office.
Now he talks into the mic.
Now he talks into the microphone. Yeah, I gotta be kidding me, right?
No, it wasn't.
Looked right up against it.
For a hearing and stuff, if I'm not mistaken. Let her know that the phone is going to be in the selectman's office, she can pick it up tomorrow. Okay?
I'm sure that's a.
They just came before us for the gasoline permit.
No.
Go ahead, Jim.
All right, so, had the local regional refuse district commission meeting last week, which I'm sure many of you saw in a newspaper. We're getting some legal, we're having an attorney from Taunton look into the chatter. And if the district has to follow it, some of us believe we do have to follow it. Audit is in progress to get us into a position where we can move forward with a twenty, FY twenty budget based upon accurate and good figures. Setting up a, an audit and finance oversight committee, or, or, they don't want to call it a committee. Just trying to tighten things up a little bit, you know, and they should kind of act accordingly as we would in a municipality or anything else, you know, with committees and subcommittees reviewing things. So, you know, we, we had a question of can we set fees and can we charge fees? And some of us looking at it and saying, no, we don't have that authority. We can recommend to the town to collect the fees. If we want to change it, we believe we have to change the charter to do so.
That take.
So, we have an attorney looking at it to, to give us their, that advice. And following up from that, we have the hazardous waste day coming up. And I got to find that. Did you see that?
Yeah.
It's going to be on Saturday, November sixteenth, two locations, Benson Brook Transfer Station and Marion and the Carver DPW Building at fifty-one R. Pond Street. That's as of right now anyhow.
It's nice that they split it up, you know.
It said nine to one. And there'll be flyers coming out, being sent to the homes. And that, that's a good thing, it's, it's something that basically Covanta covers for us.
Is that where you take your vaping equipment?
Excuse me? Yeah, yeah. I think you have to bring that to CVS.
They seem to be calling it hazardous waste.
There's going to be a limit on the motor oil, twenty-gallon limit, because some people will come in and like, you can just bring it to the store.
The funny part about that is you can take it back to the store, you got it. You put it back in the jugs, and you take it back, and they process it. I don't know why, I do it all the time, I put it back in the cans and take it back.
Most people don't. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you got to do, yeah, right, I mean, if you let it pile up, you're never going to get rid of it, you know. Plus, you won't have the slip.
Recycling committee met last night, going over how they were doing. Everything's good, you got a good group there. Gave them a couple contacts, information, one Jeff O'Seas, the executive director, you know, talked to him about some things, and also maybe a different vendor for the scrap, maybe they'll do better, maybe not. Norma White was there, talking about her plastic bag reduction bylaw, discussing with them and strategizing what to do, what, what not to do.
Spot for her to go.
So, that's it, thanks.
All right, Peter, you said no, right?
I said no.
And Mary, you know?
No.
All right, then, let's move on.
Oh, boy.
Consent agenda. Whoa.
Look at him.
The consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, Alan, did I forget you? You were busy on the phone, you missed your chance.
Steve's Towing Service.
Uh, yeah, okay, go ahead, you're on.
Give that to somebody else, will you? I'm done with it. Yeah, go off to get that, bring it to the selectman's office and pick it up tomorrow.
Who's that?
I believe the woman that was here for the.
That's my phone.
Was it?
Where the hell did you find that?
It was right here. Right here. Says Steve's Towing Service on it.
He called? What the hell are you talking about? This is my phone.
What, are you taping me?
And you answered my phone in the middle of the meeting?
Yeah.
And then you talked right into the microphone?
Yeah.
That's, that's, okay, that's a precious night right there, I'll tell you that.
Probably broke an open meeting law violation with that.
That's awesome, that's.
Well, when, when you speak to whoever that was, they'll figure it out eventually.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, to piggyback on with Jim as well about stuff. I've been to several meetings, obviously, recently. Mass Municipal Association had their meeting, legislative meeting in Lakeville. We were hosted by the new Lakeville Police Station, which had opened eight weeks before. The Lakeville Station cost eight million dollars and was a pretty spectacular facility, brand new, with a nice room for people to meet as well. Just reiterate again, the school funding bill that we're talking about, there's a special piece for low-income students that they're proposing. Those communities at minimum aid levels could have issues though, as far as how this works. So, charter school mitigation payments are in the new bill. Transportation costs are being added, there's a bond bill which may or may not increase chapter ninety to three hundred million dollars. The next piece I thought was quite interesting. AARP has a thing called age-friendly communities. I don't believe we are one yet. You can get that title through AARP, and it basically, it talks about housing where economic development is going on. There's a thing called MHP, Datatown is a good source of statistics. Chris Clutchman, Housing Choice Program Director for the state of Massachusetts, spoke also. She spoke about that the new housing has dropped fifty percent over the last twenty years. And that Senate House Bill thirty-five oh seven, which I believe I got everybody a copy of, was sent by the office, has eight different pieces in it, which the governor, lieutenant governor, et cetera, are pushing really hard to get passed on this particular session. These things, we don't have to either opt in or opt out, they'll be available. They will change a bunch of different things. I read very quickly, reducing dimensional requirements such as minimum lot sizes to allow houses, homes to be built closer together. Reduce parking area ratios, which can lower the cost of building new homes and accommodate development of smaller footprint. Creating mixed-use zones in town centers. Creating multifamily and starter home zonings in town centers near transit and other smart locations. Adopting natural resource protection zoning and open space residential development. These zoning techniques will allow clustering of new developments while protecting open space and conservation land. Adopting provisions for transfer of development rights, which we have, but we have to modify ours, which protects open space while creating more density in suitable locations. Adopting forty R., which is a smart growth zoning for incentives for dense mixed-use development in town centers, et cetera. Allowing accessory dwelling units, in-law apartments, small apartments, in the same building or the same lot. Allow for increased density through special permit process promoting more flexible development. And also, the other piece, of course, is changing from the two-thirds from zoning to the simple majority. They're going to try really hard to get this done. There's two other bills that are also percolating through. The problem there is we don't have any choice on those. If they get passed, we lose controls and we have no choice. These are optional, but they're trying to put through. So, the discussion today up at Serp had to do with what does age-friendly mean? And again, it just reinforces back what I had on Saturday, talking about, it talks about transportation, you know, outdoor spacing for, for, you know, basically young kids or seniors. They mentioned, I think it was Plymouth, they built their, built the high school, but they built a community center, senior center, right next door, to have the synergies between the two groups. And where, I know from my own experience, I remember my mother would ask, you know, why don't you go to a senior center? I'm not that old, I'm not going to hang out with these old people. And that's a prevailing feeling for a lot of people. When they put the senior center with the community center together next to the school, all of a sudden, the participation of seniors in general increased substantially and is steadily, constantly built. So, it changes the whole thing. I mentioned to Patrick earlier that I really feel bad that we didn't pull the trigger and while we're building a school, everybody's probably going to hate me to say this, but spend another ten million dollars, which over a twenty-year period isn't very much money. And we should have probably done a community center at the same time we did the minor school because that was a golden opportunity that we just didn't really think about because it wasn't really out in front of us, but it would have been a nice thing. So, I think as far as the master plan and our policy pieces, we really need to look at this age-friendly community and what it does. It's, it's coming. I've mentioned before, we have coming very shortly, if not already here, a senior crisis for housing, you know, for what people need, what can afford, social participation, community health services. You know, I've got all the information, and I think as a board, we need to start to do something on our own on this. I'd like to get this on the agenda sometime down the line. Mass Municipal Association, right on the front page, age-friendly communities. So, this is coming. There are grants, there are things to do. And in my opinion, I think, you know, not just worry here, but in general, we've done a really poor job overall providing for our seniors. Because we, the issue's not there, you kind of ignore things, and I think it's time we add this to the whole mix. And that's the one area where the master plan, you know, really didn't pick up a lot. And it's not, nothing wrong with the plan itself, it's just that it's something that's come out of, you know, right field, and it's here like now, so.
Good news is people are living longer, and I'm okay with that. I don't know about you.
We're all living, we're all living longer, the problem is we're all living our, our personal assets, et cetera.
I'm all right with it.
Oh, we got the headlines.
So.
Hell of a night.
It's just, again, it's just, this is coming, the state's pushing it, local regional organizations are really banging away at this. There's different organizations that are, money, you can go to like the hospital organizations, like Tufts Foundation, Harvard Pilgrim Foundation, they will give you money if you implement the age-friendly.
the age-friendly process, community. So we really should start to look at this and take advantage.
Okay.
Just, just to jump on that, this policy was done in 88-10.
Yep.